This meeting is for council members to review and discuss important issues, projects, and future council meeting agenda items. It's a work-study session only and allows the council to hear input from city staff. No action will be taken at this workshop, and there will not be an opportunity for public comment. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Glendale City Council Workshop Session, February 13, 2024. Meeting is called to order. We'll not call an attendance roll call because everybody's here if you'd take note. With that, Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item number one for us, please?
Library overdue rental fees.
Can you hear her? Because I can't hear her.
No.
Library overdue fines and room rental fees.
There you go.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Here to provide our staff report today is our Director of Community Services, Jean Moreno.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah. I don't know if you've got a volume control. Turn it up a little bit in the back. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Joining me for today's presentation is Kristen Fletcher Spear. Kristen has been with the city of Glendale for multiple decades, and she actually started out at our Foothills Branch Library. She's currently serving as our interim library administrator overseeing all branch operations. So today's presentation... The slides aren't advancing. For today's presentation, we're going to just provide a high-level overview of library fines and how we assess those fines for overdue items. We're going to talk a little bit about our library room rentals and that fee structure. And then we've also, for council's consideration, are providing some information on some staff conclusions as we looked at some of our data around those two issues. And then we have a series of staff recommendations, which ultimately, if we received consensus today, would need to be codified by the council with some amendments to city ordinance.
All of our fines and fees were authorized by an ordinance in 1999 when the Foothills Library opened, and our current fines and fee structure was adopted in a resolution in 2012. So over a decade, it's time to look at our structure. For definition purposes, fines, we're defining those as our daily assessment. Those are the overdue fees when people don't return items on time. And when they have overdue items and overdue fees, it prohibits our patrons from accessing our computers, checking out material, our physical material, as well as accessing our electronic resources such as eBooks, as well as databases like our Homework Help service. Our fees are replacement costs for items that are never returned, as well as if items are returned damaged. And then our meeting room rentals, as well as the cost of items such as our printing and 3D printing for the public to use. Our fine and fee structure initiatives are... It's a national, nationwide initiative. One is with our National League of Cities. They have done an assessment and a study, as well as the American Library Association. And both organizations have urges the library systems to reassess our fines and fee structures due to the economic barriers they hold. Locally, we are one of the few cities still charging for overdue fines. We've included several there, but in addition to those, Peoria, as well as Surprise, have also gone overdue fine-free.
So this is a picture of our current outstanding overdue fines. So you can see this information spans multiple years. It's roughly about $330,000. We first looked at the data to see, okay, how many of those fines that are being assessed are being assessed against Glendale zip codes? And so you can see that a majority of the fines, the overdue fines that are being assessed, are being assessed against Glendale zip codes. And so obviously, a majority of those, Glendale residents. As you know, there are a couple of zip codes in our community that span jurisdictional boundaries, but we felt like looking at this data on a zip code level was a good way to look at it. So that was really our first question, is who's really being impacted by these fees? And so our conclusion here is it's a majority of Glendale residents. So this next slide here just shows, okay, throughout the city, what does it look like? You can see that patrons throughout the city are being impacted by fines. Most of the fines are less than $12. We do have a cap per item on the amount that can be accrued for outstanding fines, but you can see pretty much everybody's being impacted across the city. So this next slide, we really wanted to take a deeper dive into that zip code level data. And what you can see here is that our lowest-income areas of their community have the most outstanding fines. And so with, you know, 85301 zip code representing about 30% of all overdue fines, so we thought, well, maybe that's just because there's more patrons in that zip code that are utilizing the services. So we did take a look at the data, trying to normalize it by population. So we took the population by zip code, the number of patrons by zip code, and you can see in 85301, 24% of the population have a library card, so we call them patrons. But they're still representing 30% of the total fines, whereas at number two zip code, the 85302, about 35% of the population in that zip code are patrons, and they're representing about 21% of the fines. So what this showed us is that there is definitely a disproportionate impact to lower-income areas of our community. And then I've also shown the poverty rate there along with those zip codes, so that you can see, you know, the zip code that has the highest poverty rate in our community is being impacted the most by overdue fines.
And then this is about our meeting room rentals. So on an average, we have about 208 rentals a year. These are the ones that we are charging fees for. This isn't including library programs, as well as city department usage of the room. So these are just our citizens, nonprofits, and commercial use of our meeting room spaces at three of our four library locations. We average about $26,000 a year in room rental fees. The second portion of the slide, it says after-hours rentals. These are hours when the library is not open, so it's before we open or afterwards, evenings and weekends. And as you can see from this, our residents get a much smaller portion of that rental fee at that point. It becomes much larger in the commercial. Our challenges with our meeting room rental management is that there is no automated fee collection service for us, so it is a lot of back and forth between the staff and the user. They might have to come into the library to pay the fee in cash, or they mail us a check, as well as have to create library accounts for them so that they can charge a credit card for it, because our reservation software is severely limited. So that provides a less-than-ideal customer service experience, and we want to make it a little less intensive for the staff, as well as for the user. And our scheduling challenges in our after-hours rentals in particular is more cumbersome because it requires staff to come in when they aren't normally scheduled. Sometimes it might be a manager coming in instead of a security guard because of scheduling
So overall, the amount that we collect between overdue fines and fees for the system is pretty small in comparison to, you know, the citywide. You know, our fiscal year '22, '23 actuals were $17,000. We do expect that to increase a little bit, you know, roughly around $27,000 a year. And then ultimately, we took another look at the total outstanding overdue fines, and I think one of the things that we're very concerned about is the amount of overdue fines that are attributed to counts that are for children under 18. You know, we want to ensure that our residents, and especially our youth, have access to our facilities. And ultimately, what we really want is we want our books and materials returned. And what we feel is happening is most likely people are not returning books because of this fear of, well, I don't have the money to pay the fine. And so they get the notice in the mail that says they owe $40 for a book, they can't afford to pay it, so they just aren't returning the book, and they aren't returning to our programs, and they aren't returning to our facilities. So they're missing out on education and enrichment opportunities. So the other part that we looked at is how much staff time are we spending to collect this $27,000 a year? And it's pretty significant. Patron complaints or concerns around fines and overdue fines, and the staff time that's spent having to explain what the fine is and why it's being assessed and what their options are, is pretty significant. And then Kristen mentioned the room rental fee, the kind of back and forth. So we're estimating that those two things, if we didn't have to do those two things, we could save about 19 weeks of staff time a year, which in our world would be pretty significant. Those are... That's time that could be spent in helping a patron find a resource, and, you know, additional investments in library programming, better customer service, shorter lines to check things out, and those types of things. So ultimately, we have some conclusions. Obviously, we talked a little bit about it. We do feel that based on the data, that our structure with our fines is creating a disproportionate impact on lower-income areas of our community, obviously unintentionally, and that the amount of staff time spent on these activities is not staff time that's very well-spent based on the collections that we're receiving. So ultimately, we have a list of recommendations there, so we would like to... So obviously, we would still continue to assess fees for items that are either damaged or not returned, but we would just continue charging those overdue fines for items that are not returned on time. We would remove outstanding fines from patron accounts, and then I've already had a conversation with our finance director about collaborating on an appropriate debt write-off policy, which we don't currently have. I think that's going to be really important to the kind of long-term future of what that looks like. And then discontinuing fees for room rentals. Obviously, we would still reserve those rooms for resident and nonprofit use, but do so during normal operating hours, so that it's not creating an operational impact. And then one of the things that we would recommend is that in order to reserve a room that you... Whoever is reserving it needs to have a Glendale library card. And the reason why that's important for us is because we do receive through our reciprocal borrowing agreements with Maricopa County Library District, we do get funding allocated based on the number of library cards that we have in our system. And so with that, what we would be asking for consensus direction on is to amend the city code. This is located in Chapter 20. I've included a draft of what that code cleanup would look like. But basically, we would be removing any language regarding fines and meeting room rentals. We would clean up some obsolete language that's in there, but then also refreshing the library advisory board powers and duties to reflect contemporary operations. Some of the things that were in there are not things that they currently actually do. And I did confer with the city clerk's office as well, just to make sure that that wouldn't conflict with the uniform bylaws that had been previously adopted by council. So with that, I would be looking for any questions and then consensus direction.
Question?
Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Bottom's down on that. On the overdue fines, can you tell us... Thank you for the work in breaking it down by zip code. Gives us a great story. Can you tell us the amount of time that books or devices are out on overdue? Is it a week late, five weeks late, a year late?
Mayor and Councilmember Aldama, so we have a system that we've set up. So if you check out a book or a material and you don't return it on time, we have automatic renewals as long as that item hasn't been put on hold. But we have a limit on those automatic renewals. So currently, our automatic renewal is set to five. You can renew it five times automatically. It had previously been set to three, but we feel like as long as the item is not on a hold, then you should be able to keep it as long as you are continuing to get value from it. After it hits that five and you haven't returned it, then you're going to get a notice saying, hey, you didn't return this item, you owe us for it. And at that point, we'll obviously have to... If this is approved by council, we'll have to modify that language. We would be encouraging people to return the item. If it doesn't get returned, then that's when it transitions from overdue fines to a lost or replacement cost.
Thank you for that. I did not know that. Let me ask you this. Is that five-time renewal period causing some of people to be late and getting the fees? I see your recommendations, but if we did two renewals, would they be more engaged to encourage to bring them back?
Mayor and Councilmember Aldama, no. We actually feel that the longer renewal time is better for a couple of reasons. One, I'll just use me as an example. I'm not the most avid book reader, but I want to read my book, and I check it out with every good intention of reading it. But for me to read it within two weeks or four weeks is probably not realistic. So it depends on the person and the user. It also depends upon how many items they're checking out, as an example. A lot of times, you have families that are coming to the library, and they're checking out multiple items for multiple children. And so having... We feel a staff recommendation is having that longer time is actually more encouraging for people to bring the books back on time.
So not attributing to the late fines. Thank you.
Mr. Melnar?
Thank you for your presentation, and I think this is very critical for our community. Just a couple of questions regarding... Now, when you say you're removing fees, so it'd be all fees for all rentals, is that correct?
Mayor and Councilmember Melnar, yes, that is correct. So we'll talk overdue fines. So if you return it late, we're not going to assess that fine. If you fail to return that item altogether, or if you return that item and it's damaged, you would incur the cost of that.
And at what point in time do you assess that? I mean, how long do you wait before you say, this book is too far overdue, or this video, we need to assess a fine for the replacement of that item?
Mayor and Councilmember Melnar, that would be the five renewal period, so it's roughly 10 weeks if you do five renewals. 15 weeks. So after that period where they've exhausted all of their automatic renewals and still hadn't returned the book, that's when we would assess that cost. Now, if, as an example, we have somebody who had an item for 15 weeks, and we send them the letter, and then they bring that back into us, that item, and it's not damaged, they would not incur any charges or fees.
Okay. And how do we communicate? I mean, do you use just letters, or do we utilize electronic emails and whatnot in order to facilitate and reduce cost?
Yes, we do have our email. So two days before something is due, you get an email reminder saying, hey, just heads up, you have some items out, they're due back on this day. And then two weeks after a item hasn't been returned, you get an additional notice. And then after that is when you actually get a mailed print notice, and that is part... So that just in case we have bounce back, we get stuck in spam, the last notice is a print mailed to your home address saying, this is what your fines will be accruing, your fee will be if you don't return the item at that point.
I see. So but it gives them the option to return it without any fee, correct?
Yes.
And after that letter, do we communicate at all after that, or is that pretty much the last communication?
Mayor and Councilmember Melnar, so if we fail to get a response from our letter, we do have an opportunity to send it to collections, and so we do work with an outside collection agency for that. As part of the discussion with finance on our debt write-off policy and all of that, we'll also be having some discussions about whether or not there's an opportunity to do internal collections versus external.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now on to the room rental, if I may, Mayor. Is it going to be all rooms in the library system would be at no charge? Is that what I understood you say?
Mayor and Councilmember Melnar, yes, that is correct. So that's what we're recommending, is that we just continue charging a fee to rent that room. The rooms will still be available for rent, though, or for reservation.
Okay. Does that include the auditorium at the main library?
Mayor and Councilmember Melnar, that's correct.
Okay. I mean, I think that's a great service to our community. However, I am a little concerned of the demand that may recreate, and it may push out our own residents.
Mayor and Councilmember Melnar, that's something that we also want to be cognizant of, and that's one of the reasons why we want to make sure that whoever reserves the room is a library card holder. That's step number one. But then the other thing, too, is working on those administrative policies to make sure that we are... We do have the ability to prioritize Glendale residents and nonprofit organizations, because we two agree, we wouldn't want to see those rooms getting booked up by commercial enterprises exclusively.
Correct.
The other thing that we've talked about on the administrative policies is ensuring that whatever activity is happening in those rooms, if it is, you know, booked by other than a Glendale resident or nonprofit, that it is open to the public. So we've talked about some of those things. From my perspective, the foot traffic that could be generated by having those rooms reserved is actually pretty good, because that's really what we're trying to do holistically with all of our programs and services, is we have really good library patrons that utilize our programs and services. We're trying to reach other-than-traditional library users, and so that could be an opportunity to do that. So it's something that we'd like support to try, and if, for some reason, we're seeing that it's not working out, then obviously, we would have to revisit that.
Okay. Again, I commend you for moving forward with the plan that you've put together as far as reducing or removing these fees. I think the community will benefit greatly from it. Again, my reservation is, and I think you maybe need to consider looking at putting, say, so many rooms or so many days are reserved for residents, and then if, you know, two weeks before the date, it becomes open to anyone, and then so many would be allowed for business or commercial or nonprofit, so that we don't push out our residents. And that would be my biggest concern, that if a resident wants to have a community meeting, that they always have an ability in one of our libraries to call up a week or two ahead of time and get that scheduled.
Mayor and Councilmember Melnar duly noted, and that's where we would... If we get direction to move forward, we'll make sure that we have some very solid administrative policies.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me? Is this one...
Yeah.
Okay. What... I haven't... I've had a library card for a long time, so I don't know. What is the requirement to get a Glendale library card?
Mayor and Councilmember Tolmachov, we can definitely get you hooked up with a library card, but I'll let Kristen answer the detailed question.
To get a library card, you just need to have photo ID and something with your current address, and as long as you live in Maricopa County, it's a free library card.
Okay. So anyone in Maricopa County?
Yes.
Because it's a county library system, essentially?
Yes. Anyone can get a free library card. Because we have a reciprocal borrowing program with Maricopa County, those people who do not live within our city, the county actually gives us some type of funding for every library card outside of the city.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm just... And I do have a library card. I just had it for, you know, I don't know, 20 years probably, so I didn't know if it had changed. And I think it used to be Glendale, you had to bring in like a water bill or something to show that you were a Glendale resident, back before they merged the system with the county. I'm just curious, what do other cities do? Like, could I go to a library in another city and use one of their rooms with no fee? Or is it reciprocal? Is that what we're...
Mayor and Councilmember Tolmachov, we haven't researched the room reservations with the other communities. I do believe that we would most likely be one of the first that we're offering free room rentals or free room reservations. But again, from our perspective, it does two things. It drives traffic to our facilities, makes sure that those facilities are being adequately used for the public, but then also, again, through those administrative policies, make sure that we are prioritizing Glendale residents and nonprofits. But most importantly, that things that are happening in those rooms are either a benefit to the Glendale residents, or again, if you have a nonprofit or an HOA or something like that, that it's a Glendale entity.
Okay. Thank you for that. I would just like to maybe see us... Because I kind of agree with Councilmember Melnar that I want to make sure that Glendale residents have access and maybe not necessarily priority, but will we track this? Will you guys be able to track it and say, so we know, are we getting besieged by room rentals from other, you know, outside Glendale residents, so that if we know in a year's time or something, that we maybe need to make some adjustments to the program to make sure that they're available for Glendale residents?
Mayor and Councilmember Tolmachov, yes. We will be looking at that, just to monitor it. The other thing that we'll be looking at is utilization rate. Are we seeing that the rooms are, you know, being utilized 95% of the time, those types of things? But yes, we will definitely be looking at that.
Okay.
And then if, as an example, on the operating side, we're seeing that, hey, this really isn't meeting our intent, we would definitely be coming back to council to request some policy direction if we felt like we do need to change, you know, the decision about the room rentals.
Okay. And Mayor, if I could, one more question. Are we... Are you planning to... How are you planning to roll this out to notify residents in the community of this change in policy?
So Mayor and Councilmember Tolmachov, obviously, we would want to put some information out there. Very specifically, we would be doing some mailers to the people who have overdue fines, letting them know, hey, if you still have this material, please return it. There's, you know, we're waiving these fines and fees. But then doing some social media, letting people know. And then on the room reservations, we probably... Our recommendation is that we would... Because we do have some bookings currently, we would make that effective July 1st in terms of the no-after-hours rentals. But yes, there would be a comprehensive communication plan and campaign. We really have to go back and look at all of those old outstanding collections to make a determination, again, in conjunction with finance on at what point do those get written off, because some of them are very old and probably shouldn't be on the records. So that work has to happen first, and then the communication. Ultimately, if we get direction today, we would be bringing forward the ordinance at probably the next council meeting, and then it's 30 days from there that the ordinance would be effective.
Thank you.
A question I have for you. On the room rentals, or I guess we don't want to call it rental, the usage of a room, what assurances will we have as a city that if it's left dirty or something broken, that we would be able to have that taken care of financially?
Mayor, we do have forms, obviously, as part of the reservation process, that the person who's reserving the room has to agree to. We'll need to revisit those terms and conditions just to make sure that they would be legally binding, so if there were damages, that we would have the ability to go after them. But currently, we don't require any kind of cleaning deposits or anything like that. And then the other part of it, too, is that staff is obviously on hand and would be monitoring those things. So if there was an issue that came up, and I'll look to Kristen to see if we've had any issues. No?
No.
Okay. We haven't had any issues like that with equipment being damaged or anything like that. But if there was something, obviously, we'd want to look at our terms and conditions when they agree to that rental, to make sure that we'd have the ability to recover that.
Yeah. As long as something like that's in there, I would be comfortable with that, but I don't want to just leave it open where we're not charging, and no one's held accountable if something happens either, so.
I agree.
All right. Question?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. With regard to the fines, I can see removing them, but there is a concern for me is that we are just destroying another means of accountability within our society, you know? Now you can have a book for as long as you want, no fine, return it whenever you want. So I'm kind of like on the horns of a dilemma. I understand that it impacts zip code 85301, which is the lowest socioeconomic denominator in this city, but is there any... Is there any way to create some form of accountability? I mean, maybe instead of imposing a fine, you ask a student for an hour of community service at the library, where they help stack books or put them back on the shelves or whatever, so that we retain some kind of form of accountability, especially for our youngsters? And I think that's important. As for the room rental and doing away with the after-hours room rental altogether, what other resources are there in the community for our residents to go and use a room, a city facility, if we remove after-hours?
Mayor and Councilmember Clark, so to answer the first question, so what we're proposing is... Mayor and Councilmember Clark, so to answer the first question, so what we're proposing isn't that people would not be held accountable. They absolutely would be held accountable if they failed to return the book entirely after they've exhausted all of their renewal options. So there is that, there is still that accountability. What we're saying is we would rather have our book back than assess a fine. And what we're seeing is that we feel that the economic barrier of the fine is preventing our books from coming back into our collection. And so that's really the goal for going fines-free is to get our, get our materials back. So I use the example of if I get a letter in the mail saying I owe $40 for a book, but I can't afford to pay that and I have the book, I'm probably not going to return it because I'm afraid of getting in trouble and it's like, well, if I'm going to have to pay $40 for the book, I might as well just keep it. Well, we really want our materials back. So that's, so there is accountability to it. It's just a different type of accountability and a little bit more flexibility. And then also not creating that economic barrier for individuals who frankly, if they had $20 in fines, would, it could be challenging for them to pay and we see that every single day. The employees in the library have told me stories about patrons that they've engaged with and they feel so bad for them and because of our ordinance and our structure, there's very limited opportunity to help them. On the second part of your question, in terms of other places, city facilities, obviously there's, you know, recreation facilities that through parks and recreation and then obviously the civic center, which is more of a rental, you know, for an event kind of a thing. The types of things that we typically see at the libraries in terms of room rentals are homeowners associations and different smaller community groups and those types of things. And we feel that for those types of activities and those nonprofit groups, having an opportunity to gather at one of our facilities, it does a couple of things. One, it gives them that space that they obviously, like you can't have a big homeowners association meeting at a Starbucks, right? So that fills a need in the, in the community, but then also for us, we'd like to see some increased foot traffic because at that point, we have a live audience that we can then encourage them to check out our other programs and services and amenities that we have to offer at the library.
I can support doing away with the fines as long as you indicated there's an accountability element to it. I am concerned about doing away with meeting space after hours for our residents. The, for example, the only place really in the Yucca District is the library. There is no other meeting spaces. And if we've taken away an HOA or our private groups, a citizen's, a resident's ability to meet at a silly facility, let me try that again. City facility, that's the only place that they have. So I'm a little bit more reluctant to do away with after-hours, especially for our residents.
Mayor and Councilmember Clark, one of the reasons why, or the reason why we're recommending doing away with the after-hours is because when we looked at who was renting the facility after hours, a majority of those rentals are commercial. So it's not our residents that are truly being impacted. And then the, the second part of that is the operational impact. And so our goal obviously is to provide top-quality service during our normal operating hours and doing those after-hours rentals is creating an operational impact for us. Is it significant? No, but it's enough to where it caused me pause to say, okay, a majority of these after-hours rentals are going to commercial enterprises and it's creating some operational impacts for us. It's enough to where I feel making, making that recommendation to the council is important.
I have one follow-up question then. Are any of the libraries open until nine o'clock any day of the week?
Mayor and Councilmember Clark, we're open until 8:00 PM on Mondays and Thursdays.
Okay. So that's during normal operating hours. So a resident could book a room at a library as long as their meeting ended by eight o'clock?
Mayor and Councilmember Clark, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, several people want to speak. We're going to go to Mr. Melner next, Mr. Turner.
Yeah, you don't, my customer's answered. I'm good.
Just a couple of comments. I kind of agree with some of those comments Councilmember Clark made regarding accountability. I don't know what the answer to that is. I think having it go to a collection agency is part of that. So it still holds some people accountable, at least if it isn't returned after 10 or 12 weeks and the final letter goes out. The other thing I'd like to comment is more administrative and I'm not sure who puts this all together, but when we have a proposed ordinance before, so it is changing, I like to see it in the format of like legislation where the old language is crossed out and the new language is inserted versus it all being just on here as it is.
Mayor and Councilmember Melnar, I'll ensure with the clerk's office that that is posted that way. I believe that the, I do have that redline version and I think that's what I submitted, but it may be something with the software that it automatically accepted the changes.
Okay, very good. Yeah, I like to see that even though it's easier to read just as it is. I like to see what was changed or what's removed, what's added. Thank you.
Was that your only question?
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the commercial rentals, could you tell, tell us again, what would typically be a commercial rental? I understand what the nonprofit and resident ones are.
Yes. The type of commercial rentals that we see are financial groups. So financial planning, lawyers using it for wills and trusts workshops and that sort of avenue.
Okay, thank you. So commercial, but also perhaps informative and our residents apparently are attending them. So they must perceive they get value out of that information that's relayed. I need to think about that a little bit, but it is heartening to know that we're not saying, we're saying outside of normal hours as opposed to not after five o'clock or something like that. So there will be evenings in which this is available up to a certain point of time. We could continue because for some of those types of things you just mentioned, perhaps the evening hours are the best times for residents to be able to go and receive that information. The, when we think about the fines, we typically think about books, but we distribute other articles as well, don't we? Music and videos and do we do any original art that is available for borrowing?
Mayor and Councilmember Turner, you're correct. So when we talk about fines that are assessed per item, it could be books, DVDs, CDs, any material that you can check out from the library. Our backpack, our discovery backpacks and those types of things. So yes, it applies to any physical material that you can check out. As far as electronic materials, those, you can't overextend on electronic materials because it's digital.
Right. The digital type stuff. I'm just, part of me is concerned that, that we've become more of a shopping opportunity for some of those physical types of things, you know? Certainly people, you know, keep books for a long time and include them in their personal libraries that they might purchase or whatever, but I don't necessarily know that it's good for us and if it's, would that be part of the national standard that CDs and DVDs and things like that would kind of eliminating the expectation or lessening the expectation of them being returned? And that, that concerns me a little bit. And original art, do we have that for loan in our, any of our art collection? We're not doing that. I know many libraries across the country do have either original or print art that's available. That I think would be important to get back. The, I'm, I'm willing to go down this road. I would like to, if there is a consensus to move in this direction, I'd like the council to also consider that between now and whatever time an ordinance would come back to us for a vote, that if there's a consensus that maybe administratively, we could declare a 60-day amnesty period and advertise that as well to encourage anybody who's feeling guilty or whatever about an item they may have out or they're feeling like they can't afford to bring it back. That would give us, give them all a good reason to bring anything and everything back that they might have during an amnesty period. And then if the council so chooses, whatever the ordinance would come forward, if we want to in essence extend that amnesty period indefinitely is what it would work like, then we would be doing that. We would just eliminate the, you know, we would amend the ordinance as proposed. So I'd like the council to consider an amnesty period between now and whatever time the ordinance comes back to our consideration. Thank you.
Lauren, question? All right. I have one thought. When we built Heroes Park, I think most, most everybody here remembers the battles that we had on just trying to get Heroes Park Library built. I really don't like the idea of basically just telling businesses, well, we're just not going to open. I really have a problem with that. My question for you is, why can't we figure out staff cost and then just add an additional cost for that business and give them the option if they want to be there later than normal? So we're not out money, but we're still utilizing the facilities. The very reason we put money into that library was for those opportunities.
Mayor and council, we can absolutely revisit the fee schedule if that is council's direction. My staff recommendation to you is that the amount of time that we spend trying to collect those fees is not, it's creating an operational impact for us and it's time that our staff could be spending on other value-added activities. So my recommendation is that we provide these rooms to the public free of charge. Now, if council says, yes, we're comfortable with providing those to the public free of charge, but we still want you to accept after-hours rentals, we can certainly do that as well if that's your desire. The after-hours rentals accounts for about 25% of all room rentals, so about 50 a year. And then if it continues, if after-hours rentals continues to create operational challenges, then we could come back. So that's certainly an option if the concern from council was about not having enough opportunities for after-hours rentals. Currently, again, like I said, our standard operating hours on Mondays and Thursdays are until 8:00 PM and then with the exception of Wednesdays, most other days of the week, it's until 6:00 PM. Then obviously we're open on Saturdays and Sundays as well. So we could certainly, you know, continue with the after-hours rentals, but discontinue the fee collection, which would still create some savings on staff time.
All right. Well, to be clear, what I'm thinking is for the residents, private residents that want a meeting, I have no problem with not charging them. For businesses that do it for a fee, I don't know why they can't do as any other business does and that's pay their own way. You know, I liken this to building the lake, you know? If we chose not to let people fish there after a certain time just because we don't want staff there, then why do we build the lake? I, you know, to me, it's, let's make it available to everybody, but a pay-as-you-go type of thing. So if you're a business, you're going to make money from it, well, you should have to pay your own way. That, that's my personal feelings. I don't know about everybody else. As far as the residents, however you guys want to do that, I have no problem with that. But I think businesses should be allowed to pay an additional fee and be able to stay open later if that's what works for them and for the general public they're bringing in. Just my opinion. Any other comment?
Only that I agree with you.
All right. What do you need?
I need to understand the consensus from council. I, I'm looking for consensus direction on the staff recommendations as they were presented. So maybe we take it one piece at a time. So is there consensus to move forward with eliminating overdue fines?
Yes. I see, I see enough odd, yes.
Okay. And then on the, the room reservations, is there consensus to move forward with eliminating fees for room reservations?
For residents?
Period. For anyone with a library card.
Okay, say it one more time, a little bit louder.
Is there consensus to eliminate collecting fees for renting or reserving our rooms? Regardless of the type of entity you are, as long as you have a Glendale library card, there would not be a fee associated with reserving our rooms?
Yes.
Mayor, may I? Okay, but a business wouldn't have a library card. So how would that work?
Well, they could have a library card.
Somebody would have to have one and then they would have the fee waived. So, okay, but what you're saying is if we wanted to charge a fee for them to do after-hours, we should at least look at that.
Mayor and Councilmember Tomachov, that was going to be the next question I asked. So the first question on the room reservations is, is there consensus to stop charging a fee for reserving our rooms?
Yes. That seems to be, yes.
Okay. Now, the third question is, is there consensus for discontinuing after-hours rentals?
I don't, I don't know. I don't.
I'm not seeing a consensus on that.
Okay. So, thank you. That's exactly what I need.
Any other question? Are you done? Next, Adam.
Mayor?
Oh, go ahead. Hold on.
Would you be willing to poll the council on whether or not they would like to have an amnesty period between now and whenever the ordinance comes to us?
If I understood what you, your statement earlier, I do like that if, as long as we aggressively push that. I, you know, if we hire a collection agency, they're going to keep, I don't know what the fee is, 50% of it probably.
Mayor and Councilmember Turner, what you're proposing in terms of an amnesty would automatically happen with the changes to the ordinance and so we would basically push something out to everybody who has outstanding items saying, hey, bring your items back. You don't owe us anything. So that would essentially be your amnesty program. But at the same time, we would, we would be eliminating any future fines associated with outdo, or overdue items.
Mayor, my suggestion is that we do this amnesty program between now and whatever time that the ordinance can come back to us and that we can probably get some bounce off of it and get more stuff returned than if we just say, oh, well, you know, go ahead and keep it. We're not going to fine you. And then once we get past this one, I still, there's something I'm not quite clear on in this conversation. Thank you.
Well, and I don't disagree with you. I just think that if we're going to do an amnesty and push it, I think we need to aggressively push it to get it out in the public as much as possible.
So there's two.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but I'm just saying that.
That's two of us that agree towards the consensus. I saw some other councilmembers' heads noting, moving that they.
Is there consensus with other members?
Mayor, if I may, I just want to make sure that there's some clarity and what I'm, what I'm saying is when we push out the communication saying you don't owe us any overdue fines, you still would owe us if you don't return the book. So that's essentially what you're talking about with an amnesty program is you say, bring the book back and you don't have any fines. And that is what is going to happen automatically anyway. So if Kristen has an overdue book and Kristen has been notified, we would send that to Kristen and say, you need to return this book or you have to pay us for the book. So it's, it eliminates the fines, but you would still have to pay that replacement cost of the book. Say the book is $40. Kristen would still owe us $40. So we're not saying that with this program that if Kristen doesn't return that book, that she does not owe us that $40. She still owes us that $40, but she can bring in that book and would not owe us anything.
Mr. Mayor?
I understand that. If the city manager understands what I'm suggesting and the other councilmembers do, then maybe we can move forward if we have a consensus.
Mayor, members of the council, I think what, what we're not quite connecting the dots here. What we're saying is because officially we have a fine system in place until the council revises the ordinance. What I'm hearing from Councilmember Turner is between now and when the council takes official action to remove fines or to change our program, are we going to be out enforcing as the way, the way the policy currently is? And I think that's what you're asking. Can administratively, can we stand down on enforcing the existing as we contemplate bringing back the new revised ordinance regarding fines? I think that's what I was hearing from Councilmember Turner.
Just a little bit farther and not just stand down, but actually declare an amnesty period. You know, whether it's going to be 60 days or whatever before it comes back to our agenda and whatnot. And I'm not saying, oh, we can get around that by rushing it through. Let's have like a 60-day amnesty period that they can return their borrowed items and. and the fine will be waived. And I think that's something that we can advertise and work with that would actually get more things returned. And I'm asking that, you know, the council indicate that they wouldn't be opposed to that happening administratively, not unlike how we administratively decided not to enforce the no flags on Thunderbird Mountain period while we were in the process of developing or eliminating that provision. I mean, it's like we see something coming down the road. It's not just a stand-down, but in our cases, it'd be something we could push forward and I think would get more stuff back.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's irrelevant to grant an amnesty period. In essence, that's what we're doing. So, so if you grant an amnesty period, I don't think that's necessarily going to drive them to turn in the book knowing that we're waiving all fines in 30 days once we adopt the new ordinance. So I don't think it makes any difference.
Mayor, so it seemed to me from this distance that you and I were in agreement on this. And I thought that I saw a couple other heads nodding that they agreed with that. Let's do an amnesty program, advertise that while we're in the process of drafting that ordinance. And who knows, maybe by the time the ordinance comes to us, we'll have a change of heart and won't pass it. But at least we'll have done an amnesty program that gets the, you know, gets material in. But, you know, I think if somebody asks to see if there's a consensus, we ought to see if there's a consensus.
I was trying to see if there's consensus, but I wasn't getting a lot of reaction from everybody, so. You have questions?
Mayor, I understand. I mean, I think the point too is that, if I'm understanding it, is to say, if you bring your book back next week, you're going to, you still owe us the money. But if you wait until the ordinance takes effect, you're not going to owe us the money. So why wouldn't we just say, starting now, because we've all agreed we're going to start waiving fines, starting now immediately, we're just not going to collect fines anymore? Because if you, if you, the only way you get the, you don't have to pay the fine is if you wait until the ordinance is adopted and then another 30 days after that. So I feel like it does make sense because if we, the idea is to get our material back and we've already decided we're not going to collect any fines anymore, why tell people, because what's going to happen? I mean, you know, people are busy and they see it and they say, oh, I'll wait until whenever to bring it back because I don't want to pay the fine. They might forget and still not bring it back. So if they just know they're not going to get fined starting now, I think it makes more sense just to say, can we administratively waive the fine now and not have to wait until the ordinance goes into effect? It'll take at least a couple weeks to get it on the agenda and then another 30 days for it to go into effect. Anybody who turns in a past due book between now and then would owe us a fine unless we do this. Right. So that makes, it does make sense to me.
Mayor, if I may, Mayor and council member Tomanchop and council members, so we currently have the ability to, if a person is declaring a financial hardship, to have those fines waived if they return the item. And so essentially what you're asking for, we can do now. And I understand what you're saying. I think, I apologize. I confused the terminology you were using with an amnesty program. Basically, what you're asking for is a moratorium on fines. So implement a moratorium on fines effective immediately while we're waiting on the ordinance to be approved. It still has the same effect, but yes, that is absolutely something that we can do and we have been doing it if a person declares a hardship.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. That explained it even better. No, I'm leaning towards what you're talking about. If you have an overdue book and you say you don't have to pay, you can bring it back, that might be great. They're thinking, whoopee, I can turn my book in and not get fined before we start the whole program. I think, I don't know why we don't try and do it.
Mr. Bailey?
Mayor and council, the challenge that I'm kind of grappling with here is that you have an ordinance on the books. And an amnesty program means that you are not going to recognize your own ordinance. And so that I think where we can get to where you want to be is that you can direct the city manager not to enforce the ordinance as it currently exists. So you will not assess any additional fines or you will not take any enforcement actions, but you will invite people to bring their books back. And then when you pass the ordinance, that is the amnesty program. Because the challenge is, is we are in a workshop. We're in a workshop. So we're having a discussion about what action we will be taking at a future meeting. So my recommendation is if, and it sounds like there's a consensus, is that, and I'd frame it in the context is, is that you would direct the city manager to not enforce while this is being considered, while, while, and it, while this ordinance is going to be considered.
And I understand what you're saying, but that wasn't really my point. My point was people need to have a reason to want to return them. And if we just simply say right now, we're not going to, we're not going to penalize you as long as you return it, that's not quite the same as in a month from now, we're going to be coming up with some new ordinances on your library cards. Right now is your chance to return it. And we have the possibility of waiving the penalty. And we're not saying we're going to do that, but at least encouraging people to get them back. We don't have to necessarily tell them that our new ordinance would be exactly that. We just need to tell them that we're going to be coming up with a new ordinance. Mr. Phelps?
Mayor, members of council, we're likely going to have this back. We can have this back in two weeks. It's going to take us two weeks to put a marketing plan together. So I think it's kind of a moot point. I think the staff, we're not going to be, you know, we'll, we'll use good judgment and discernment. We've heard the will of the council. We'll figure out the best way to do it and we'll, we'll rush this along and we'll have it back for the, for the council to look at in two weeks. Is that correct, Jean?
Mr. Phelps, yes.
Okay.
Okay. And then my final question is, do we need to move forward with what Mr. Bailey was suggesting at this point?
Mayor, members of council, again, I think we've kind of heard the consensus. We'll, you know, we'll, we'll stand down. We'll kind of internally do a moratorium, which is different than an amnesty program. I think that's the nuance the city attorney was trying to say. So we won't be charging anybody fines that bring a book back. Meanwhile, we will ramp up our, you know, our effort to put together a campaign, but that's going to take a little bit of time to actually figure out the best way to communicate that.
Right. All right. So do you have what you need then?
I do. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody good? All right. Ms. Barr?
Water meter replacement with advanced meter infrastructure.
Mayor, members of the council, staff item number two will be presented by Ron Serio, our Director of Water Services.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor and council.
You'll have talk into the microphone a little bit closer.
All right. Is that better?
Yeah.
All right. Today, we're going to talk about our water meter infrastructure and specifically advanced meter, metering infrastructure, which is basically using technology to read our meters instead of manually reading our meters with staff that are going out to every meter every month. What we would like to talk to you today about is defining what AMI is and also how it works. We will also discuss what our current state of our meters are and where we would like to go with this project. We will also touch on project costs and project benefits, next steps, and then we will request consensus from council. And the consensus will be two parts. One is, do we move forward with the project? And if so, we would like to get consensus to also apply for grant funding to help offset some of the project costs and shorten the payback window. Automated meter reading is something that we've been considering for quite some time. So in September of '22, we hired a consultant to look specifically at Glendale's metering infrastructure and also to look at what the cost of implementing this would be and what the benefits would be. We hired Arcadis and I'd like to introduce Mr. Michael Rotuno to my right. He is, he has been leading this project for Arcadis. And the bottom line is, his study recommended that we move forward with this from a financial perspective. And also, there's other benefits that not only we will receive as a city, but our residents will also receive. Some of those benefits include improved data analytics that we would receive as a utility. We will be able to better tell when our water is being used and also help us identify areas of conservation and help focus conservation education efforts. We also expect to see an improved customer experience. Our customers will have the ability to go to an online portal and look at their use on an hourly basis instead of once a month getting a snapshot of their use of water. We think it'll also help provide transparency. And there's other benefits that the customers will have, such as they can opt-in in the portal. And if, if the system identifies a leak on their side, they can opt-in to be notified as soon as it's detected. And it gives them the opportunity to know sooner that they have a leak and get it fixed before they get a big water bill. Additionally, our operations in-house, we expect to see a reduction in cost by, you know, less vehicle miles driven to go out and read meters. We expect to reduce staffing because we don't have as much of a manual effort to go out and read meters. So there will be financial benefits moving forward on that. The other one is our current meters, they, they don't register 100% of the water that's actually being used. And, and we expect to see a little bit of increase in terms of the amount of water that's being metered. So in other words, we send a certain amount of water, but we're billing for a little bit less than that. And, and by being able to capture this additional revenue with newer technology meters, that's the, the biggest piece of the finance component that helps pay for this project. And finally, we want to stay current with industry norms and practices. Doing automatic meter reading, it's something that most meter utilities are doing. You see it in the electrical utility industry, natural gas industry and the water industry. It's pretty common. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thank you. So I'd like to start with just a quick overview of what is advanced metering infrastructure or AMI. So AMI is a system of interoperable components that work together to enable better communication of information from the water meter itself out to the people that need to use that information, whether it be utility staff or customers themselves. And so this is depicted on this slide with this simple diagram showing the components. Starting at the very left, we have the water meters themselves. And as you know, these are installed at each water service connection served by the city. And their function is to measure the volume of water used in a given time period or the amount of water usage. We also note that there are sensors because there's new sensor technology coming out, both integrated in with newer meters as well as additions that can be implemented in AMI that can provide more information about the operation of the utility water distribution system. So these are things like pressure sensors, temperature sensors, et cetera. So the next component we, we talk about is the AMI hardware. So the meter in an AMI system, each meter is outfitted with a thing we call an endpoint or a meter transmission unit, which is basically a small antenna. And we have some pictures coming up here. But that antenna attached to each meter transmits or broadcasts the information from the meter using a radio signal. That radio signal is then captured by the AMI hardware, the data collection network component of the system. The information from each meter is then aggregated together and provided to a suite of software components. The software components are used to both administer and monitor the AMI system as well as to integrate the information from each meter into the other key information systems in the city, such as the utility billing system. And then lastly, we show the people and the processes that they use, that they use this information to support. And those people include both utility staff as well as the water customers. All of these components then work together to form an AMI system. So we have some additional detail about these components, starting with the communication network or the data collection system. Data collection in an AMI is based on radio frequency communications using commonly-used and FCC-approved methods. Systems are available either using cellular as a communication method, in which case a common cellular carrier such as an AT&amp;T or Verizon, their network is utilized to support the system to transmit the information. There's also fixed network options, which basically means that special-purpose equipment is installed throughout the city to gather the information. Each meter sends very short radio transmissions. So they're measured in milliseconds and they're done periodically throughout the day. So they don't transmit continuously. They transmit in short bursts. The information is encrypted and the system as a whole is secured. The information that is sent from the meter does not contain any personally identifiable information. It's basically a string of numbers with some flags in it. No names or any information like that, no address information. And then lastly, the networks themselves are designed to be redundant. So on this slide, we have a few photos that illustrate it a bit better. On the bottom right-hand side of the slide is a cross-section of a mechanical water meter. And you can see at the top, there's a small wire that's connecting it to that rectangular-shaped box. That is what we call the endpoint or the meter transmission unit. This is essentially the antenna that sends the data out from the meter. On the left hand of the slide, we have some different photos of the equipment that comprises a data collection network, a fixed network. So different examples of different style electronics cabinets there as well as different antenna configurations. So the next slide, we wanted to talk a little bit more about the meters themselves. So the city is contemplating, should they move forward with this project, to adopt what we call static water meters. Static water meters are electronic in nature as opposed to mechanical in nature. And they offer a number of advantages. One is they have no moving parts. They also measure more accurately, especially at low flow rates. They also can measure water usage at flow rates that mechanical, at low flow rates that mechanical meters are not able to measure. And then lastly, static meters do not lose accuracy over their life. So mechanical water meter generally are known to degrade over time their accuracy as the components within the meter wear and friction wear takes, takes place. They measure less and less of the actual water that flows through the meter over their life. A static meter doesn't have that accuracy degradation, so it holds the accuracy throughout its entire useful life. So on this slide, we just wanted to present some information about where AMI is within the water industry. And the main point is that it is not bleeding-edge technology. AMI has been used in the water industry now for approximately 20 years. On the left, we have an excerpt from American Water Works Association Annual Water Industry Survey from '23. And it indicates 61% of the surveyed utilities are either assessing up data or installing their, a new meter reading system. In the middle, we're just showing some examples from the region where different utilities stand with comparable meter replacement and AMI programs. And on, on the right, we just picked a very small subset of some of the early adopting utilities, some of the large utilities that notably are using AMI. And there's certainly many more out there. So given that overview of AMI, this slide shows the current state for meter reading contrasted with what the future could look like should the city adopt AMI technology. So starting on the left is the current state. City has approximately 65,000 water meters. Currently, they're mechanical water meters. They're all located outdoors in meter boxes that are buried in the ground. 94% of the meters currently are red. that are buried in the ground. 94% of the meters currently are read manually by a meter reader. So on a monthly basis, a team of meter readers will walk the meter-reading routes, physically lift the cover off the meter-reading box, and then visually record the numbers off of the meter into a handheld computer. And they do that one time per month, so the utility and the customer receives one meter-reading per month that shows the usage for that one-month period. There's a smaller subset of meters currently, approximately 6%, that the city is reading by a drive-by meter-reading, which is sometimes referred to as AMR, automated meter-reading. For these meters, they are fitted with a radio transmitter, so similar to AMI, but a little bit different, but similar, in that that transmitter then broadcasts a radio transmission of the data. That transmission, though, is gathered by an antenna that's mounted to a vehicle, which is driven around the meter-reading routes. Again, that's done one time per month, so only one read is returned each month. Contrasting that is on the right, what the system could look like with AMI. So firstly, the city is intending to adopt static meters. For most meters, there's a population of meters that are newer that we would retain, just because they're newer meters. But generally, new meters would be of a static meter variety. All meters, whether new or retained, would be put onto the AMI network. Reads would be gathered then multiple times per day, hourly intervals. So readings would come in, and data would show hourly water usage, as opposed to just once per month. That information would be made available to customers via a new customer portal, as well as made available to utility staff via Swedish software. So many benefits are associated with AMI. Benefits for the customer start with the offering of a new, advanced customer portal. So this is a web-based piece of software that customers can use to see their water usage, to perform other self-service functions, see their bill, and various bill-pay options. But additionally, the technology allows for proactive leak detection and leak monitoring. So often, on the customer's side of the meter, if there's a leak, so a toilet flapper, for example, is a great example, which everyone's probably had, the software can detect that there might be a leak happening on the customer's property. And then the customer can be notified, notified via the portal, or notified by other means, so that the leak can be addressed more quickly to reduce the amount of water that's basically wasted, and hopefully addressed before it gets to the point that it causes exceptionally high bill for the customer. Next slide. The utility also achieves a number of benefits with an AMI that help them be more effective. So firstly, given that the meters more accurately measure water usage, and that data is available in a more timely manner, it introduces numerous operational improvements. So reductions in complaints, ability to help customers over the phone by being able to look at the same information that they're looking at, reducing the need for high-bill adjustments, reducing the need for potentially estimated bills, different kind of operational problems can be greatly reduced with AMI. Also, the system reduces the vehicle costs, so there's less need to drive meter readers all around the city to get the reads. So there's a vehicle cost reduction, as well as a carbon footprint reduction. And then there's also much more information available for city staff to monitor the operation of the distribution system, but also really to drive conservation programs and to design more advanced conservation programs using this more granular information. So as part of the needs assessment work that has been performed, we developed an acquisition cost for the project, as well as a business case evaluation for the project. So starting with the acquisition cost on the left-hand side of the screen, you can see various scope items were estimated and subtotaled. There was some allowance made for potential to get salvage value from the existing water meters. And then a contingency was applied, given that we're at the planning stages of the project. And the estimated acquisition cost is assumed to be $31.37 million. On the right is the result of the business case evaluation. The business case evaluation is slightly different, and we were looking at the cost or the value of benefits, and the cost of the system over 15 years. So this is the acquisition and operating cost of the system. So the benefits are shown on the top of that table, broadly fitting into three categories. One is improved meter registration. So as mentioned, with static meters, being able to measure the lower parts of the flow range, but also not losing accuracy over their life, there's a benefit which can be translated into a dollar value based on the volume of water that's being now measured. There's a benefit associated with enhanced labor productivity, so freeing up meter readers to either serve in other functions, or over time, slightly reducing staffing levels there. And there were also then the operational cost reductions related to vehicles and fuel and things like that. So that comes to a net, and then we take the net present value of that to normalize it for 15 years, and then compare that to the same net present value of 15-years acquisition and operating cost of the AMI. And so we do that to get to the economic indicators, which are shown on the very bottom right in the table, which tell us whether the project is advantageous or not. So the indicators we focus on, benefit-cost ratio estimating at 1.45, which just indicates that we estimate more benefits than costs over the life of the system. Internal rate of return, you can see, and then also, simple payback period, 8.9 years, which is less than the expected life of the system, which we conservatively put at 15 years. The life of the system is typically 15 to 20, so we conservatively use 15. So the payback shows that the system would pay back for itself within the expected useful life. The note at the bottom, though, just to say, is obviously these are preliminary planning-level cost estimates. The actual project cost would be confirmed as part of the procurement, based on binding offers from the market. In terms of funding, I know that the city has, or the utility has included $33 million in the proposed capital improvement plan budget. We also are working on and seeking consensus to submit an application for a grant. The grant is offered by the Bureau of Reclamation. It's called the Water Smart Water and Energy Efficiency Grant. Past fiscal year offerings of this grant have been awarded to multiple AMI projects. So AMI is one of the types of projects that this grant is definitely geared towards, for western states only, of which you obviously are. The grant itself is for awards up to $5 million. Grant applications are due February 22nd, and then the notifications of the grant awards are expected by this fall. And at that point, there would need to be an authorization from the council to accept the grant. At this point, we're just asking for consensus to apply for the grant.
All right. You ready for questions?
I think that's where I end.
I have the next slide, Mayor. We anticipated some discussion about the rate impacts of this. Again, just to kind of review, the project would cost approximately $33 million. We have the potential of a $5 million grant, although that's obviously not guaranteed. But we also have some availability of some water cash funding if we need it. What we would do to finance this is issue approximately 28, anywhere between 28 and the full $33 million in water bond financing, so water revenue bond financing. And the way we would structure it is such that while we're implementing, before we see the full benefit of the increases and the operational cost savings and that type of thing, we would likely structure it as interest-only payments for those, for that first three years during the implementation. And then after that, the debt service is estimated to be about the same as the amount of revenue we anticipate coming in. So it's sort of one of those projects that pays for itself. Now, is the revenue guaranteed? No, it's not. We're not saying it is. And revenue, you know, can fluctuate up and down depending on water usage. There is likely to be some conservation. So it's not without any risk. I wouldn't tell you that. But we think that even if it didn't pay for itself, the other benefits in terms of the data that we receive, and the convenience for our customers, and those operational savings, make it worthwhile to do the project. So that's why we're bringing it forward to you for consideration, because we think it's a good idea. And personally, I, you know, will tell you that I wish we'd started this 10 years ago when I got here. It's really long overdue in terms of the industry and that expectation of our customers.
I have some questions for you. If I understood your presentation properly, this should pay back about $3 million a year. Is that correct?
Mayor, members of the council, that's correct.
Okay. How does this thing send a signal out? Does it require a battery?
Mr. Mayor, yes. The meters and the endpoints are battery-powered devices.
Okay, so if it requires a battery, that's going to require a replacement. How long is a battery expected to last?
The stated battery life is 15 to 20 years, typically 20 years for most systems. And the systems are warranted for 20 years, typically a 10-year full replacement, which includes the battery. And then the second 10 years are on a prorated basis. The batteries, generally speaking, and especially for the small meters, are not replaceable. So the items are replaced at the end of their useful life.
I want to understand what you just said. So you have to replace the entire apparatus, not just a battery?
Mr. Mayor, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And these will all work through the phone system or something like that? We won't have cars driving around. I think Avondale put this system in about 12, 14 years ago, if I'm not mistaken. And I never did understand why we didn't do it, other than the fact we didn't have money at the time, and our bond rating wasn't so well. What about the ball valve, to turn the water on and off? How does that differ or change? Or is it the same valve that's currently there now? If one of our residents has to go out and turn off their own water, is that still a simple thing to do?
Mr. Mayor, some of the new meters do have what we call a remote shut-off valve, and they're either integrated in with the meter themselves, or they're a separate unit. And with a remote disconnect valve, you can remotely, from the computer system, press a button and operate the valve, either to close it or to open it. However, the remote disconnect valves currently are very costly. And so we do not have remote disconnect valves included in the project numbers that we've shown. Just for, you know, round numbers, a remote disconnect valve could add anywhere from $200 to $300 to each meter. So that's an addition, additional cost over the base cost of the meter. So as of right now, they're not included in the project definition.
Okay, so you didn't answer my question about the original turnoff.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. As it stands right now, the existing manual shut-off valve would retain, and to turn the water off would require someone to, you know, manually operate it.
Okay. And then who takes out the old ones, who puts in the new ones? City staff do that, or is it the people that sell the units?
Mr. Mayor, so it can be done either way. The way we've planned the project is that contractors would be retained to do the installation, so that it could be done within a reasonable timeframe of two to three years. I expect that at the same time, city staff would also start installing the new technology once it is selected. But generally, the project right now includes installation services.
Okay. And then if I understood your presentation, you're keeping all the old water meters coming out and selling those, repurposing or scrap, or you're getting some money back for those. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. We would, we assume that they would be scrapped, and there would be some scrap value returned to the city.
Okay. Question?
Thank you, Mayor. I got a few questions, if I may. So I looked at your, let me find what slide it was. Slide five. So how are we talking about deploying this? Are we talking about putting up our own wireless infrastructure on city streetlights and so forth? Are we going to use existing cell towers? Or what is the plan for deployment?
Mayor, members of the council, I'll take that question, I think. From our standpoint, what we would look for today is a consensus to go forward. And then we're going to go prepare an RFP and get bids from different entities or responses. And then, as we look at those responses, different companies, different people who will respond will propose different ways, and then that'll be part of the evaluation. IT will be involved in that to see what's the best way for the city of Glendale, whether it's the, whether it's radio or cell tower, will be determined as part of that bid process.
So that'll be determined, Mayor, if I could, that'll be determined by whoever does the RFP, whatever they decide, you know, like what is going to be deployed out in the community? Or will that, how will that work?
Mayor, members of the council, again, we don't want to restrict when we put the RFP out, because what we will do is put an RFP out for a system, and then we'll be asking the vendors to propose how would they have it work. And then the city itself, our experts within utilities, with the help of Arcatus, will determine which is the best option for the city of Glendale.
So maybe I didn't ask that correctly. So let's just say that everybody decides that they're going to use whatever that thing is on the bottom there, that ugly-looking thing sticking off the streetlights. If that's what the, so that decision's going to be made by whoever's on that panel? That's what I'm trying to understand. Or the decision, I mean, is it, I don't know if there's a difference. There's obviously a difference in costs, whether you're going to be able to put up other antennas on existing cell towers and lease space from, you know, whoever owns the cell towers, or whether we're going to, obviously, we've got streetlights all over the city. But that's one of the things that, I mean, I've been fighting this battle, because I serve on the ITC Committee for National League of Cities and Towns, is some of this stuff really uglies up your community. So the aesthetics of what it's going to look like are important to me, and I would imagine they're important to our residents, and they're important to us to know what's going to be deployed out into our neighborhoods.
Mayor, members of the councils, Councilwoman Tomachov. So again, what we're going to be looking for is authorization to solicit bids. We would then go through the normal process. It doesn't mean we have a contract. We would analyze those bids, bring in all those factors into our recommendation, and then we will come back to a workshop and share that information with the council, show what the staff recommendation is, receive feedback. But you're not, we're not, staff's not making the decision with the go-ahead to do the RFP. It's just to solicit information and see what kinds of technologies will work. We could find a situation where it may take multiple deployment of technologies because of interference or other kinds of issues. We don't know that yet, but that's what we do during the RFP process.
Okay, thank you. That was my concern, is that this is going to be put back in front of us before a decision's been made, that what's going to be deployed out into the community and where. Because, I mean, I know, I'm sure all of us have gotten phone calls from people who said, you know, "That thing wasn't there when I left for work this morning, but it's there now." So that's one of my questions. My other question is, I got a few. The customer portal. So how is that? Because I know one of your slides shows a, is there an app? Is it going to interface with what we are, with our Glendale One? Or how is the customer portal, how does that work? Does it have to download something else to be able to do this? Are we going to be requiring residents to do to be able to use the portal?
Mr. Mayor, and to the councilperson, so the portals are web-based applications, so the customer does not need to download anything. It would be, so they would have to enroll. They'd have a secured log. They'd have a secured login. And then they would access the portal and see the functions that are available. In terms of, I was presented and you asked about Glendale One, that would be part of the requirements that we would define how the city wants to have it integrated in with your existing system, as well as how it should look, the look and feel, things like that are normally configurable in the portal and will be determined by the, by the city.
Okay, thank you. So Mayor, I'm going to continue. Would the portal include, also include their billing information, like their entire water portfolio with the city, or just their use and all of that?
Mr. Mayor and to the councilperson, so in discussions with city staff, the intent would be that would, it would be a fully functioned utility portal. So it would be the singular point of entry for customers who want to interact with their city of Glendale water account. And so that would be things like displaying both granular usage as well as billing usage, displaying, you know, billing information, prior bills, current bill, amount to do, as well as having the ability to then make online payments or enroll in recurring payment programs, et cetera. So the idea is that it is truly a unified water utility portal for customers to use.
Okay, thank you for that. So how are other cities doing that? Are they, are they, are they putting it in their own platforms so that we have control of the customer's credit cards and account information? Or are they completely outsourcing that to your, some other platform where that's all being managed?
Mr. Mayor and to the councilperson, so it, it is done and can be done both ways. I think most commonly, utilities are outsourcing that to vendors. There are a suite of vendors that specialize in water utility portals, and that's their core business. They handle all the payments and they handle all the payment security and things like that. And as of right now, I do believe in working with the IT team and the utility team, that would be, the intent here is that we would include within the RFP requirements for a commercially available customer portal.
Okay, so would, would that be part of the RFP also? Is that would be, okay, all right. Let's see, I have another question. The meter readers, so there'd be no need for meter readers apparently, once this is fully deployed. So what happens to those, those jobs? Those people find other, other things they can do within water services? Or how would, how would that be managed?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, the need wouldn't completely go away. What we've identified, we, we have a total of about 21 staff that are involved in reading meters and there's turn-ons, turn-offs. When people move out, you got to go out and take a read. So we expect that we can reduce the total number of staff by about five. We would expect that we would redeploy them. We wouldn't just go and cut staff. Our plan would be that we would reduce positions by attrition. And as, as meters are getting implemented and there's less routes that need to be covered, we would utilize those staff to go help put new meters in during the three-year process to get through, you know, all of our meters throughout the city. So yeah, there would be some, but you know, even though it's an automated system, there are still things that go wrong and things that need to be fixed. There could be a communication error or a meter could fail. So they, there, there will still be a level of troubleshooting and making sure everything's working correct that would need to continue to occur.
Thank you. And I have one more question. The automatic disconnect, would that, is that available? Like if, say, for example, I wanted to have that? Because if you get a, say, you get into, the city calls you and says, you have a water leak and I'm on a cruise in, you know, somewhere. I, I would, I mean, if I wanted to pay for it, would I be able to say, I want to have that on, that option, I'm going to pay for it, but I want the city to be able to shut my water off because I'm on vacation? Is that, is that how that works or how would that work?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, I believe we will go out. If somebody requests their water to be shut off, we will go out and shut it off.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're, we would currently do that.
We would do that manually?
Yes.
Okay. All right. But with that, the idea of being able to notify somebody early on when you can see, you know, the meter spinning and obviously, you know, it's, it's out of the ordinary because I, I mean, that's happened to me. It happened to me once when I lived in Peoria. We were on vacation and had a pipe burst in my kitchen and, and we didn't, we didn't know. And by the time we got back, it was a mess. But, so we would be able to let people know relatively quickly that there's a lot of water running in your house, so.
Yeah, so basically, each customer can opt into a portal where it would automatically notify them directly without going through us. So yeah, I think that's a huge benefit. They would know pretty much immediately.
And there's no, there's no additional fee for that?
No.
Right. And do we charge a fee to go out and turn it off in the event somebody's away? Or do we, or we would have, would we have to take a look at that to actually send somebody out or?
At present, we don't charge a fee to turn on, turn off meters. We, and unfortunately, I mean, for delinquent accounts, we're out, I, I mean, we do several hundred a week typically, maybe in the 200 a week range that we're out and about. So we have staff out and adding another meter to go shut off, it's, it wouldn't be a big impact to us.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess when you get to my age, you get skeptical about things. And so my first thought when I saw this is, if it ain't broke, why fix it? You know? This is like the newest shiny toy that y'all want to implement. So my first question relates to the quote, "cost of debt service to be offset by increased revenue." Are we looking at increased water rates to cover this new shiny toy?
Mayor, members of the council, what we're saying is because these meters will register more flow at the low end, replacing with these static meters, they're, the additional water that's currently not being billed will be billed, which should add to the water utilities revenue. Having said that, in terms of water rates, we, when we did the forecast back in December or January, we talked to council about possibly needing to revisit rates. So there, there will be rate increases probably over time. We don't want to wait 10 years and never raise rates again like we had when I got here. But they won't be driven by this because this system will capture more water going through the meter at those low flows.
Okay, that's wonderful. But there could be a rate increase. We could find out that we're not making enough money capturing low water flow and that it could be a component of a future rate increase. And I think that's a fair statement because we're guessing right now. We don't know what the reality will be until the system is installed, correct?
Mayor, members of the council, as I said earlier, it is not without risk. That's correct. We, we're not absolutely 100% going to guarantee that all of this, you know, additional $3 million a year revenue is going to be captured. There are many, many factors in people's water usage. The system is designed to prevent leaks, promote conservation, and all of those things help reduce water usage, which we think is good for everyone in the long run, but it has an impact on rates as, I mean, excuse me, usage, as does weather and many other factors. So it, it is not without risk. I wouldn't ever tell you that it's, oh, it's 100% risk-free. Your statement is correct.
I appreciate you're acknowledging that it is not without risk. Let me ask another question. New technology is great, but it becomes obsolete quickly. Did you figure in this $33 million, the cost of replacing technology that may very well be obsolete in five to seven years? Is that cost figured into the $33 million?
Mayor to the councilperson, so the estimates are based on a minimum 15-year useful life of the system.
Let me interrupt. So you're saying that whatever technology we employ, we'll use it for 15 years? That when new grader stuff comes along, you're not going to come back to us and ask us to replace it earlier, correct? It's going to be good for 15 years, life of the, of the system on payback, right?
So Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Clark, when you talk about the, the change in technology, components of this technology may change. For example, we talked about a customer portal. It may be upgraded, things may happen, but the underlying basis of the technology has been out there for many, many years and has not changed.
Let me interrupt. My question is, did you figure in a possible replacement cost if there is an upgrade to the system? Is that figured in at the $33 million?
Mayor, members of the council, I mean, let me see if I can help answer that for you, Councilmember Clark. First of all, the technology, it's not like a computer or vehicle where there's all kinds of new technology where it does different things. This meter has one sole function, which is to measure the flow of water. The technology that's been used to do that has been around and implemented, as said, there are some systems 10 to 15 years old. So we believe that we've based our model on a 15-year. We don't envision a new bell and whistle that we would want to capture because it's only doing one function. It's measuring the flow of water and transmitting that information, you know, back, back to us. So we're, we're comfortable that the technology, you know, is, is solid and that there won't be a need to come in in four years from now and say, well, there's a better way to measure something. I mean, it, it, they're highly accurate, they performed very well, and they are, as we saw in, in the one slide, we see these installed in a high percentage of utilities across the country already. And we're not seeing any example of needing to replace it two, three, four, six, seven years into the program.
Okay, thank you. You're trying to sell me, but I'm not there yet. Did you figure out all equipment, over the lifespan of equipment like meters, a certain percentage are going to go bad or fail every year? Did you figure in a replacement cost? Did you come up with a percentage and say, okay, maybe 1% of the meters are going to fail annually and we'll have to replace 1%? And that cost is figured into the $33 million? Was that figured in?
Mayor to the councilperson, so we did include in the 30, in the lifecycle cost number, ongoing operating and maintenance cost for the system.
Okay. Last, last question for now. You said that most likely you're going to outsource the billing, the re, the reading and the billing, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor to the councilperson, so billing would remain in-house, so there's no, no discussion of changing billing operations. The meter reading wouldn't so much be outsourced as the technology would do the lion's share of the capturing of the meter read, but city staff would still be responsible to use the system to obtain the meter read.
Okay, I'm confused because I thought you told Councilmember Tomachoff that some of this would be outsourced.
Changing the meters.
Yes, Mr. Mayor to the council, yes. So the initial installation would be contracted out.
Installation only.
And then the customer, there was a question about the customer portal, and the customer portal would be a piece of commercially available software that is purchased as opposed to made in-house.
Do you have any idea of what, because other cities have done it, so this is not like you're reinventing the wheel. Do you have any idea what, of what the cost, of, of what the potential cost could be for How much of that $33 million is devoted to installation costs?
The installation, oh, Mayor, Mr. Mayor to the councilperson, so the installation is shown on the left. It's the Third Line Meter and AMI Installation Services were estimated at, if I can see that far, $5.07 million.
Okay. All right. I may have more questions, but for now, that's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to make sure that we're clear that AMI is, is the technology in general. It's not a particular product or manufacturer within the technology, right? It's just the overall term for the technology. I too am a little bit concerned about the receivers, I guess, that would be deployed throughout the community to pick up the signals. And we do need to make them as unobtrusive as possible. And I think if the opportunity exists to make, to go to a product that's multifunctional, that would be able to provide other service to our community, then that might be worth looking at. I'd like to see if that option, I know the option exists out there. I'd like to see it worked into this so that if we decide we want to do motion detector street lamps, we don't have to have a different module up on every one of them to do that. We don't have to do, you know, and end up having an array of these things if there's a multifunctional unit that could be used for this technology. I think the real, the real benefit to this and the direct benefit, because I always try to see, you know, there's, there's things that are good to do, there's things that overall help the, you know, the system, our city as a whole. But you know, sometimes I like to go, what's the real direct benefit to our residents? And I think that that really comes up in the portal, which is on slide number nine. And that dashboard that we see there kind of in the, at the lower portion with all the blue bars on it, that's broken down by hour of the day. And the water usage is actually measured on an hourly basis so that if a customer has a toilet maybe off the laundry room that they don't get to very, you know, they don't visit very often, or that has a leak, or if they have a, a landscape issue that's leaking, it would actually show up as water usage all day, all night in that portal. And with these, these new meters capturing even smaller amounts of water moving through them, even to the point of a half a gallon an hour or something like that, the consumer, our resident would be able to see from their portal, or the city would be able to see too, that there's something happening here because you wouldn't have that same minimum amount of water usage happening every hour, regardless of what time of day or night it was. It would also, this portal and the alerts that are available through it, as I understand it, would also be able to alert the city and the, and the resident to a more catastrophic water leak, you know, a, a burst water heater or a pipe in the attic or something like that, that, that they could be out of town for or could be in a portion of the house or a garage where they may not, it could go for days or could be underground and could go for days without being discovered. So I think that's extremely valuable to our residents. These meters will be a little, will be more efficient, so everybody's, will be paying more accurately for the water they're using, which may actually mean their water bill goes up a hair. But the benefit of that accuracy can, you know, would be, you know, hugely beneficial in those kinds of situations. And I don't know if this would have an impact on water or on homeowners' insurance rates and things like that, but it seems to me that it ought to. And then the other benefit is just for water conservation as a whole. It gives us a much more accurate picture citywide and the residents on their own home as to how and when water's being used and how there might be ways to be more, you know, more conservation, you know, as far as, again, finding leaks and things like that, but also noticing that, you know, that their sprinkler system is, it must be their sprinkler system that's turning on seven days a week at, at 5:00 in the morning. And they can say, well, do I really need that? You know, can we go back to three days a week or that sort of a thing? Just making them more aware of their water consumption. And I think that's a, that's a strong direct benefit for our residents. So I can support this. I- I can support this. I, uh, the pro- the projections are that we have a eight-point-something year return on the investment, and I'm happy with that, that range, particularly if we have a, a fifteen-year or longer, um, uh, usable life of this equipment, then that means we're gonna be on, on, you know, we're gonna be up on the black and the, on the upside of this curve, you know, for, you know, close to half of its, its life that we're in there. And that's just the first, the first phase, and then, you know, as these last longer and longer, then uh, we should, uh, reap benefits, you know, going, you know, down the road, so. Um, this is, pardon the, the wave of the future, a little water pun for you, but, uh, and I think we need to get on it. Thanks.
We're gonna go to Mr. Phelps next, and then.
Yeah, just, just three things maybe to piggyback. So, one, we don't have a systematic replacement schedule for the existing old valves, and we know we have a number of old valves that will be failing over time. So, as Councilmember Turner kind of reflected, it's all, it means within a three-year period, we are getting rid of, uh, in some cases, twenty-year-old valves that are, that are not performing well, that will need to be replaced, and will have a cost to the system. We'll be starting off with all-new technology all across the board. I think that the two things I really wanted to hit on that was mentioned, and, and we talked about it briefly in the, that it gives the ability for us to collect data, and the analytics around that data will tell us a lot about how our users are, you know, using their water supply. And that's really important as we go forward, as we look at conservation measures into the future. Us being able to understand how our consumers are using our water system may allow us to, uh, to operate our system more efficiently over the long haul. I, oddly enough, and you may find this hard to believe, up in Seattle, twice when I lived in Seattle, even though it's an area of high rain, we were put on mandatory, uh, cutbacks of water because of a drought situation. And you weren't allowed to water your lawns during certain time, you couldn't wash cars, and it was a nightmare for enforcement because people were going out at four in the morning and, and doing what they were told they couldn't do. I hope we never get to that point here in Glendale and with our water, but it also gives us more tools to make sure that if we do have to mandate some type of rec- curtailment or reduction of water, we'll have information very readily to know where we can go out and re-educate that particular user or homeowner to say, no, you're, you know, you need to be cutting back. So, I think there, those are kind of some of the other benefits that are hard to quantify or monetize, but I think they are significant and, and are another compelling reason why we should be moving forward with this project.
Mr. Melon.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to go back to the improved meter registration, uh, savings. Um, i- is that strictly the number we've been talking about based on better reading of the usage? Is that the main component of that, uh, that amount, that forty-three million?
Uh, Mr. Mayor to the councilperson, it's, it's better, uh, more accurate measurement of the usage, and, and also the fact that the static meters do not get less accurate over their life, so they stay at the same accuracy level for fifteen years.
Okay, thank you. So, based on that forty-three million, that's about two-hundred-and-forty thousand a, a month uh, that we'll be adding to our water bill. So, it, is that an accurate statement?
Mayor, Councilmember Melon, I'd have to do the math, but that sounds about right.
Okay. I mean, I just divided it by fifteen years and then twelve. Which, and we have sixty thousand meters, so you divide about sixty thousand, it's about a four dollar per month. Uh, my only concern, and I really, uh, agree with the sentiments that have been acknowledged here, uh, as far as the accuracy, as far as providing a real benefit for the consumer, where they know how much, uh, they're using more accurately and more precisely. When something goes wrong, they'll be able to identify that quickly. I really think that's a, a great selling point. I just have one concern, and that is, and I've seen it already in my district where I had a complaint, uh, several complaints, that we did replace their meters with new meters, and their water rates jumped significantly, uh, you know, twenty percent or so. Um, and I, uh, that's my biggest concern is, we have a, a meter out there that families relying on having a hundred-dollar water bill, uh, and, and, you know, garbage collection bill of a hundred dollars, and then all of a sudden it goes up because of the water usage. I mean, do you see that as a problem? I mean, you said you based this on your estimate. What percentage increase did you kind of figure out that would gain? I mean, capture from each individual, cuz we're basically going to ask for a little bit more money because now it's more accurate. It's what people are really using, but, uh, as, do we have some plan in place if we see some really egregious jumps? That we try to mitigate that for the residents?
Mayor, Councilmember Melon, uh, what you're saying is accurate, and what that depends on is the age of the meter. If it's a twenty-year-old meter that's being replaced, uh, most likely they're gonna see a higher increase because that meter is degraded and it's less accurate. It could be ten or twenty percent less accurate. We do have something in place now where if we have somebody that is lower income, we provide funding to help cover water payments. Uh, so that is one thing we have, if they're, if they don't have the means to pay for that. But what I would expect is people that don't have a twenty-year-old meter, or if it's a ten-year-old meter, they're not gonna see as much of a difference. It's gonna be a lot smaller. But the few that have the really old meters will see a difference. And we're currently out changing meters on a regular basis. We try to, um, change meters out that are getting old and not registering correctly. We do that on a regular basis today. So, we still have that issue whether or not we switch to this system.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Was there, oh, question?
I have one more question. Um, just to, um, Councilmember Turner brought up the idea, do these, back to the, um, the digital, the commu- however the communication is gonna be managed, whether they're gonna be deployed through cell towers, or, or if they're actually, you know, put, we deploy our own communication system for these. Are they only, you, do they only have just one use? Or are there things that have other uses that could be used for other smart city-type things that we may wanna, you know, not have to go back later and add an additional whatever it is onto the streetlights and telephone poles?
Mr. Mayor to the councilperson, so, um, there's a wide spectrum of capabilities that are available in the market. The most limited systems offer mostly meter reading and possibly some other water utility-related type, um, functions. And it's a complete other end of the spectrum are, um, open standard-type systems that allow you to add many other types of sensors. I use the word "smart cities", so some of the systems run on protocols that would enable other types of smart city, um, applications. And it's, it's a broad range, and it varies, um, you know, vendor by vendor, what capability, you know, where on that, that spectrum their, their system resides.
Uh, Mayor, so I'd, I'd like to, I mean, I don't know if it's possible to, to include that in the RFP, but that we look at both ends of the spectrum. We look at what is the cost for single-source, basically, something that literally only manages the water, the water account, the water user. And then we look at the other end of the spectrum where there's other possibilities. So that, as Councilmember, uh, Clark's mentioned, that technology is constantly changing. At least if we take a look at, if we deploy something that's a little more, um, has more ability, that it might be of more use to us longer into the future than something that's literally just, just for this to particular use. Is that possible to look at both ends of the spectrum with the RFP?
Mayor, Members of the Council, we, we will make sure that we entertain all kinds of options so that we can, um, in- incorporate that into the lifecycle cost of our system.
Thank you, Mayor. The, uh, you know, in a time of AI, it's appropriate to advance and progress to AMI for the city. It's, uh, we, we are, we, we are slightly behind. There are some cities who've already advanced, taking advantage of this, uh, of this, uh, technology. Uh, so, I'm in favor of it. Uh, do have some of the same concerns some of the councilmembers mentioned, but, uh, let me ask you this question. Uh, if the radio goes down or the system goes down, is there a device that staff can use to go read that, or, uh, do they, can they still read it manually?
Uh, Mr. Mayor to the councilperson, so, you can always read the meter manually. Normally, they, these systems can also be read by a drive-by, the, the vehicle system I mentioned. And so normally that's like one of the contingency plans if for some reason the entire system went down. Although, as noted, the systems are built with redundancy so that if something happens to, say, one collector, there's other collectors that can pick, pick the meters up. But there's usually redundancy built in the system, and then typically contingency plans on top of that to be able to go get the read, certainly for the purposes of generating a water bill.
Thank you, and I, I learned what you just said in my tour with, uh, with your department, uh, recently. And, um, what else I learned is that, and I wanna know if you guys can do this with this new equipment. Uh, you demonstrated to me how you have staff remove an active meter, replace it, bring it in, and check it for its efficiency and accuracy, and you showed me how you do that. Will, will the system do that automatically for us now, or do you have to go remove it and put it on a system and test for efficiency and accuracy?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, to, to do a true test of the accuracy of the meter, yes, we would still have to pull it and bring it in and do a full test on it to make sure that it's measuring properly.
Thank you for that, and, um, the, the failsafes and the redundancies are what, uh, most people would be concerned with if we didn't have them. System goes down, we're still gonna go out and, uh, collect revenue by manually reading it. My next question is with regard to commercial. Is this also for commercial or just residential? And if it is commercial, is there any cost to the, the business for that meter and that system?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, this is for all meters, including commercial, and there would not be a cost. We, this project would include replacing those meters as part of the project.
Okay, thank you.
I, I've got a couple of questions for you. I don't know who we're asking. I guess you. Uh, City of Avondale, uh, several, several years ago, came out with something similar to this, although if I'm not mistaken, uh, they had their, uh, employees driving by picking up that radio signal, and, and that's how they bill. Uh, I, I'd like you to, to actually talk with them and find out how that system's worked for them. But, uh, as I'm sitting here and trying to think of all the different options and possibilities, if it didn't have a self-reporting antenna system going out, and if in fact you, uh, maybe set up, uh, our garbage trucks that go out and go up and down every road in Glendale twice a week minimum, if the trucks were picking that same information up, would there be a huge cost savings, or could there be a huge cost saving? I, I don't need an answer on that today. I'm just thinking when you're doing that, maybe that's one of those things that maybe you should, should talk to them about and find out, is there a possibility? Uh, because if we don't have to do all that, the, 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 the cost could be less. Uh, maybe the city actually comes out a little bit better on it. My other concern is if everybody's water bill tended to go up a little bit, um, I don't see that as a savings for the city. I see that as, as a potential conflict with our citizens. We may actually have to look at, in the future, if we go this route, we may actually have to look at trying to lower our water rate a little bit if we're, if we're accustomed to a certain amount of water going out that we're charging for now, knowing that we have seepage that we're not charging for, but we're making it up in the difference. Does that make sense? Would this, would this be a, a potential situation in the future that we may actually want to look at the possibility of lowering the water bill to be more accurate in what they're actually getting, what, what they're paying for?
So, Mayor, Members of the Council, um, I think the answer to that is water rates are not likely to be decreased. However, having said that, by capturing that additional revenue, they may not need to increase as much because of that additional revenue. So that, I, I doubt that they will decrease because costs overall in, in, in the world just continue to increase, and so it may be very difficult for the utility. However, again, because you're capturing that additional water usage, you may not have to increase your rates as much as you would have if you didn't have this technology in place.
I think we're both saying the same thing. Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Is there a consensus for them to move forward?
Is there a consensus on grant funding opportunities as well?
To Seacom, I, I would think so. Yes.
Thank you.
I would, I would hope so. Okay, next item.
Request to rename El Bario Park.
Mayor, Members of the Council, here to provide staff report on both items number three and number four is John Kennedy, our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, Mayor and Council, uh, bringing an item to you, uh, for your consideration and some discussion and consensus on a recent request, uh, that our department received to rename Barrio, El Bario Park. So, El Bario Park is a little under quarter of an acre park located at Fifty-Fourth Avenue and Ocatilla Road. It's directly across the street from the Glendale Community Center. There is currently, uh, a small Ramada, a couple of benches, barbecue grill, and an exercise station at this park. There is a street-level view of El Bario Park. So, we have received a request from the leaders of the Bario Corazon Yalma Organization, uh, to rename Veteranos Park, quote, "to dedicate the park to the men and women who have served in the past, present, and future." This is an extension of the Heart of Glendale recognition plaques that this group heard recently. So, some identified options for council consideration include, we could, you could either accept or reject this request, or you could, you could give us direction to proceed by following the park and facility naming policy, which would include public outreach, and then going to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, um, that you may have.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's, uh, admirable that a group wants to rename the park, and I see no problem in renaming it. However, we're going to take up, uh, the naming of the park site formerly known as Glen Lakes Golf Course, and that went through a procedure. Um, the entire community, they, there was reach out to the entire community, and it looks like that community came back with easily almost fifty names before a final recommendation was made to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. I think we should do no less for Bario Park. If we're going to rename it, uh, I'm all in favor of that, if that's what the community wants. But I think there, we should go through the process that the city has and give the entire community a chance to, to weigh in on renaming the park. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Clark. We have a process in place for renaming parks, and I think we should follow it irregardless of where the request comes from because we're opening ourselves up from requests citywide, which is fine. I mean, if people want to make a recommendation to rename other parks in the city, they, they have the option to do that, but we should stick to the process that we have. It should go through our Parks Commissioner, uh, that commission, and they should go through a public process, and then they bring a recommendation to us, which is what we're gonna be getting um, from them with, with regard to Glen Lakes Park. But we didn't just take it upon ourselves to say, yes, we're going to do that. We followed the process. And I, like, I, I agree, I don't have a problem with it, but I think we should follow the process that we already have in place for renaming parks. Thank you.
What else?
I agree with. I agree with the Councilmember Clark.
Okay. So, that's the discussion. I don't know if you have a consensus. I, I think consensus is, is to go through the, the regular procedure.
Option two.
Is that correct?
Option two.
Okay.
Thank you.
You, you good?
Yes, I'm good. Thank you.
Uh, item four.
Naming of the new park at Fifty-Fifth Avenue and Northern formerly Glen Lakes Golf Course.
Thank you, and coming back to you with this item that's been here, uh, prior. We discussed this, uh, topic at the October, uh, workshop of the naming of the, uh, park uh, the site of the formerly known as Glen Lakes. of the naming of the park, the site of the formerly known as Glen Lakes Golf Course. Here is the outline of what the park area will be once the developer is finished with the development stages. So the direction that we received in October was to go through our park naming policy and process. So what that process included was a mailer to all the households within a half mile of the park. So that was about sixteen-hundred-and-sixty postcards that were sent out. There was the opportunity to request or submit names online. Also, a mail-in option was included as well. So the fifty-one names were submitted. Seventeen common votes for Glen Lakes Park. Five common votes for Pearl Park. And then two common votes for both Barrel and Fairway Park. The remainder of the names were only nominated one time. So this information was brought to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission on January eighth. And after their discussion, they recommended to offer the name to be Glen Lakes Park. So bringing, bringing that forward to you is their recommendation for discussion and consensus on next steps.
So Parky McPark Base was not taken serious?
Correct.
It's, it's actually on here. Okay. Questions? All right. We have a consensus?
Yes.
We'll move, we'll move forward and bring this back at a voting meeting. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Dean Clark? City Manager's Report. Mr. Phelps?
Mayor, members of the council, I have two items for you today in my report. I know that we're still only in February, but I'm sure that many of you, including our residents, will be soon be making plans for the summer vacation. And Frommers Best Places to Go, it comes out every year. And they're really the, kind of the, the go-to handbook or guide for where to vacation, not only here in the country, but the US. And so they've made some recommendations for people to consider for your travel plans. And including some of those areas, they've, there are some attractions. There's one in Seville, Spain, Dresden, Germany, the Cook Islands, the Prince Edward Islands up in Canada were part of their recommendations. They recommend fifteen places annually for where to go on vacation. On that list, however, you could, if you don't want to travel far, you can stay here in Glendale, Arizona, because they have identified the Mattel Adventure Park that'll be opening later this year should be on your go-to list of places to go. And so this is quite an honor for, for our community. They talked a lot about the hype around the Barbie movie and the Mattel Adventure Park and all the things happening there. And so something we should all be, the council should be very proud of since you've had an instrumental part in helping to bring this amazing resort property to, to fruition. The other item is that based on council policy, and we have received another unsolicited offer for a parcel of land. And we will be discussing that this afternoon in executive session.
That's all you have, sir? All right. City Attorney's Report, Mr. Bailey?
There's no report, thank you.
Okay, council item special interest, starting with Councilmember Aldama.
None at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Yes. After a long hiatus, I have two items of, of council items of special interest. Over the past several months, I've been receiving a lot of complaints about loud music, loud parties. And one of the constituents mentioned to me that Phoenix has an ordinance, G dash six-six-seven-four, that addresses the issue of loud music, loud parties. So I would like to explore perhaps adopting that within Glendale. The, the second item of special interest is that we know that in about two years, City Hall will be completed. We will no longer be meeting in the Civic Center. And I have always wanted the city to take up the idea of repurposing this, the Civic Center. Perhaps either through a sale or retention by the city, but turning it into a true entertainment destination venue that will bring people downtown. We know that the Civic Center costs approximately seven-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand a year to operate and maintain. And it draws revenue of approximately four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So we're operating at an annual deficit of about three-hundred thousand a year. I would like to turn this into something, if we're going to have to pay that kind of expense to operate and maintain it, to turn it into something that really benefits downtown. And to me, that is the idea of operating a venue that draws visitors to downtown all year long. We have plenty of time to consider this. As I said, City Hall will not be done for the next two years. But I would like to explore the idea of, of repurposing this facility. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Melner?
Nothing, Jay, Mayor.
Member Tom Chaw?
Nothing to, nothing today, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
Yes, Mayor. One thing, our Glendale One system that we introduced some time back, and I know I use it, I have many residents that use it as well. It seems to be working well. I don't recall us having had an update on it lately, so maybe we could have an update. But I also, as an item of interest, would like for our staff and management to consider improvements we can make to it. Now that it's been running for a while, let's see how we can make it better. And a couple of suggestions that have come to me from residents. One would be to be able to add a feedback loop such that when a, when a resident would get a text message, for instance, that the item's been taken care of and is now closed, there should be an option at that point for the resident to provide feedback and to agree that the item's been taken care of before it gets closed, that sort of a thing. So they don't then have to start another one or make a personal contact. And to make sure that the residents agree that the issue's been taken care of, not just the staff does. And the other suggestion is that perhaps at our facilities, and especially our parks, we could include a sign about Glendale One. And if people, if our residents have concerns related to that park or facility, they'd have a QR code, for instance, they could go straight to Glendale One to enter their, their concern, whether it's the drain being clogged and not draining at the dog park or for lights being out at the ball field or for whatever issue that might be of concern, that they could go right there at that moment and just with something as simple as a QR code and get straight into the system and go from there. So those are, that's what I would like. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing, Mayor.
All right. I do have one. Back last year, December thirteenth, I accompanied Luke Air Force Base, some folks from Luke, to Fairchild Air Force Base in Spokane County, Washington, to explore a partnership between the Department of Defense, the county that resulted in the construction of a new indoor shooting range for the county up there. Spokane County entered into a legal agreement with Fairchild Air Force Base where the county built the shooting range. And the Department of Defense is reimbursing the county for one-hundred percent of the cost over a ten-year period for the shooting range. DOD has also committed to twenty years of operations and maintenance cost. Being that that happened and worked out and they got all the, all the details worked out, I, I myself could not figure out why we wouldn't try something similar. DOD is committing, again, the twenty years of operations and maintenance costs. So Luke Air Force Base has told us there are challenges with the shooting range. My thought is why can't we have a joint-use range between our Glendale PD and Luke Air Force Base? Before we give any commitments, I'd like to introduce the council item of special interest to direct staff to look into the cost model in order to build a joint facility. Again, the council item of special interest is non-binding. And Glendale is not committed to the construction of the facility. But by introducing this council item of special interest, we can at least begin to explore the cost and use of operating a joint facility. I do know that Luke's very excited about the, the prospect of possibly making this happen. I did send a letter to the general, basically asking him, would they be interested? And that's all I have done so far. But I would like to go ahead and do this item of special interest right now where if we can move things forward, get a indoor shooting range that our officers could use in the summertime to keep them safe, keep them current, keep them efficient, at the same time allowing Luke the same facility to be a facility that we would own. And DOD would pay potentially a half a million dollars a year to operate. So I, I see this as a, potentially a very, very good thing for the city. But that is my council item of special interest. If there's any further questions, I can always go in detail with it later. With that, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Aye.
I have a motion, I have a second to go into executive session. Any discussion, hearing none? All in favor, vote aye. Any opposed, vote nay. Here's your highest habit. Council meeting is recessed.